Recording.
All right. Good evening, everyone, to the meeting of the May tenth Select Board. If I could get everyone to, I guess, I read first or start with the Pledge of Allegiance here?
Read.
Let me do it.
Read.
RSA ninety-one A Emergency Provision as Chairman of the Barrington Select Board. I find the due state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporary contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting. You may participate by dialing six zero three, six six four, zero two four zero, and entering conference ID six seven six, seven four nine, nine seven three, pound sign. You may also participate by video participation by clicking on the bit dot L Y slash B A R R S B link, which can be found on the Barrington homepage. We provide public notice for the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We've previously given notice to the public of the necessary information for assessing for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Microsoft Teams, phone and video. Instructions have been provided on the website of the town of Barrington at W W W dot Barrington dot N H dot gov. If anybody has any problems, please call six zero three, six six four, zero one four six, or email administration at Barrington dot N H dot gov. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes will be taken during this, or all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by a roll call vote. But start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance with each member stating their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law.
And. He air three thirty-four old Conker turnpike. I'm here by myself, and there's only here and it was my vote. Thank you.
Next. Vote. Anybody else seen that?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman. George Bailey, Chesley Drive, here in my office by myself, and my wife is downstairs. Nobody is here to influence my vote.
Dan Manchak, three fifty-three Scruton Pond Road. I am in my office alone. My wife is downstairs, but no one's here in the room that would influence my vote.
Jim Sikosha, twenty-one James Henry Drive, Barrington, New Hampshire. And I am home alone, and there's no one here to influence my vote.
And Andrew Depp, ninety-six Lindsey Point. I am the only one in the office. My wife, my son, my dog, and my mother-in-law are all in the rest of the house. So I don't think anyone will be influencing my vote. All right. If everyone would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Came in with me anyway.
Can you push it out?
Nope.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the.
Can you make it?
Stand one nation under. In the civil with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll start our meeting with the issuance of a building permit on Birch Lane, a private road for Robert and Teresa Rockwell. T R S. Fam T R mapped one seventeen lot three. And so I will open it up to the board for any comments or questions, concerns. Anyone?
Nope.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you. How many bedrooms are going to be built on the second floor? Do they have a representative here, Mr. Chairman?
I'm not sure. Is there a representative? Or would Robert and Teresa Rockwell like to speak?
I see a Bob Rockwell in the meeting. Yep, just unmuted himself. Go ahead, Mr. Rockwell.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
The, the intent is to just, the upstairs has the ends of the roof come down so that you can't use almost all of the upstairs. Yet we have for fifty years, we've had four beds up there. And the intent is to raise the roof and not change anything, and we won't change how it's used. It's just to make it accessible so that people can stand up rather than having to crawl to the edge.
Yeah, I noticed that attic was a little bit low on there. And my other, my last question for asking that is the septic design. Is the septic design going to hold all those additional bedrooms? If you've got four upstairs and one down, that's five. Is your system going to be able to hold it?
Well, I have to tell you that fifty years ago, my dad put in this septic system, and we've never had a problem with it. And we haven't changed the septic system. We're not changing the use of the cabin. You know, it won't have any more bedrooms. It'll be the same as it was that it's been.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. All right. Are there any other questions for the Rockwells?
Are they, excuse me, are you, the Rockwells, aware of this request to repair the broken edges and potholes caused by construction upon completion? Are you?
Yes.
Okay with that?
Yes, we are, well, there's a process where the people on Birch Lane have put in a fund to maintain the road. And in fact, is right now it's in a maintenance need. We need to repair it even before any, any trucks come in to do the work. And of course, they're not, they're not going to be a major, you know, it's not like major trucks are coming in there. It's, it's just pickup trucks and things. Oh, yeah, but yes, we are aware and we're, we're, we saw that that was noted on one of the, I guess, by the solid earnings and traffic.
Great agent, I think.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. There any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to issue the building permit?
Public hearing.
I'm sorry, what was that, Connor?
Public hearing. Open the, open the public hearing.
Yep, sorry, you're correct. Let me open the public hearing for public comment.
If you're participating by phone, you will be muted. To unmute yourself, you can press star six on your phone. Please note that that's different than the mute button on your phone. That star six is the automated system. If you're participating on the computer, you can mouse over the mute button to unmute yourself or raise your hand indicating you'd like to speak. You can also enter a comment in the chat feature. I do not see any hands going up, and I do not see anybody participating on the phone, unmuting themselves. So I think we're safe to proceed, Mr. Chair.
All right, then I will close public comment for this public hearing and the issuance of a building permit for Birch Lane, map one seventeen lot three. Is there a motion from a member of the board? So motion. I'm assuming with any conditions precedent by the buildings, by the Highway Superintendent, the Fire Chief and, and Code Enforcement Officer.
As, as stated.
Thank you. So I have a motion. Is there a second? Is Dan in them? Was your hand up?
It was, I think he was unmuting himself. I tried.
Yes, give me a second. I'll second that motion, sorry.
Okay, I just say, I could see a hand partially out of the screen, but not in the screen. So I just wanted to make sure I was.
Thank you.
Correct.
Sorry.
So I have a motion by select person Bailey, a second by Dan and Manchak. Roll call vote.
Air I.
Bailey, I.
Manchak, I.
Sikosha.
And Napi. Congratulations to the Rockwells. And you should be able to head down to Town Hall and pick up anything that you need and any documents that you need to proceed.
After the Select Board signs them, which will be.
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
All right. This is sec. No problem. The second item, item for public hearing is the issuance of a building permit on Holiday Lakeshore Drive, also a private road for Karen Gould, Catherine Cohen, and Matthew Peckerski, map two sixty-one lot thirty-one. So I will open this for comment from the board.
No comment.
No comment from select person Sikosha. I know there, from the planning board end, there was a lot of discussion and some confusion about some of the checkmark sheets and the way things were marked and checked.
I can speak to that if you'd like, Andy.
If you would, please, that would be great.
Yeah, so the, the fourth, fourth physical page in in the Select Board's packet, it's double sided. So this would be number seven for the electronic version. This is part of the application for a building permit on a classic or private road. And this is something that's filled out by the applicant. And so this is, this is a guide to help the applicant understand the process of requesting a building permit on a classics or private road. So the applicant did fill out specifically question two incorrectly. That should have been a yes. But the purpose of the application process is that the application's turned over to the building inspector, who reviews all of the information and makes sure that they, the applicant goes down the process that they need to. So we've debated not even including this sheet in the, in the packet because it's really just for the use of the applicant when they're filling out the application, like a checklist. Hey, you know, you know, following through the, the process. We'll continue to keep it in there, but the, the point is the results are inconsequential because the, after this is filled out, the building inspector reviews everything and make sure that they go down the path that's, that's required. Certainly sorry for any, any confusion. And in the future, we'll make sure that this checklist is updated before it's sent to the planning board or Select Board. But that's kind of the backstory.
All right, select person air.
Yes, I, I know this is not a big deal, but there's three names on it. Is that, is that a trust too? Or is all three in their names? It could be add confusion down the road later.
This is a family trust.
Well, there's, yeah, there's three names listed. Our ownership records list Karen Gould, Matthew Pekarski, and Catherine Cohen.
Are they part of a trust or that they're the owners?
The trust is not listed as the ownership in our ownership records.
All right. And then underneath the road policy, I want to bring up under the new business later on. Making this season stuff really doesn't have to do with this application, but does the board, the board as a whole. So I retain my right to bring that up in a new business later.
Okay. So other questions or comments from the board?
The only other comment I would like to make, Mr. Chairman, is that when I was searching this, it did show that it was in a trust. That was on our maps. It didn't show it on the, on the page, but it showed it on the map. Once you hit information and the information did indicate that it was a trust. Sorry to say that, Connor, but that's what was on there. You had to pull the map up first, then when you hit the I on the maps to give you the information listed, all three names is a trust.
Okay, so.
I have no other comments. That's the only thing I was gonna make.
Well, but if need be, I guess, part of, one of the things that I look at is through this process, if things are pointed out that are incorrect, that we're making sure that they get corrected along the way so that all the documentation tied to these tax cards and permits is all in here and is accurate the way that it should be. Now, I know I had some questions around a septic and Connor, let me know that the septic, that there is an approved septic on file for that building. I do not know what the septic ID number is, but I'm assuming all of that should be tied to the packet since this was started life as a garage.
Oh, yeah, all the. Available in the building office.
Right, my, my comment is, is they should be, they should be tied to the packet for the issuance of a building permit because part of the building permit is, does it have approved electrical? Does it have approved water? Does it have approved sewer? And those would all be items that in my general sense would be contingent upon the issuance of a building permit, which John would be the person to validate that they're all there, but they should be tied to the packet so that if anybody goes back and looks, you can see that they were all issued and they were all issued appropriately and timely before somebody goes and, or in conjunction with someone building an A D U. Dan?
I checked personally with the building thing, and there was a one on file. Problem with the state right now, if you take in, go on their website, they're not updating it. So it doesn't come up, but they have a electronic copy of it. And this project's tied to three years ago with the garage, two or three years ago. So the building permit would not necessarily have that on it, but it was amended. They add this. So there must have been a use at the time for that building. Now it's gonna be A D U, so it's changed use. And then there's a septic system on it that's approved by the state. And the only question I have is two of them on that lot, and I thought you couldn't do it anymore, but I'm not the state.
Okay. So trying to think if there, what, what else was there? The other item that came up was in question through the email that I forwarded to you folks. It was raised from a community concern was there was some, some of the property was a current use adjustment, which Connor has pointed out was a correct finding and is an item that is actively being addressed.
Yep, I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Does anyone else have any questions? John Huckins does have his hand up and he is our building inspector. So does everyone?
No objection.
Let John weigh in. John, if you would unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, to answer that question about the septic system, after the garage frame was put up, before Karen applied for the A D U, she actually got a state permitted septic system and had it installed. So when she came for the A D U permit, the septic system was already installed and paid and inspected by the state. That's why it's not out of this package.
Okay, I guess my question is, how would, being it's a separate outbuilding, how would we know that beforehand? Other than the fact that we would defer to you to, to do it, to, to make sure that it's already there.
For, for a normal A D U, I need a separately designed approved by the state before I can issue the building permit. But they don't always have to put the new septic in. The state allows them to use their existing one until it goes into failure.
Yep.
On this one here, because it was across the road, she actually put in an septic, a separate septic system to handle the A D U.
Okay, and can you speak to water and electric for me?
She, I don't know if her wells in yet or not, but she is planning on putting another well in. There is another electric service that was hooked to the garage. And we had a conversation with the town's attorney a few years ago about, I had another situation where the garage was a long ways from the house and they had a separate meter on it. And the town's attorney's opinion was it's considered a shared service as long as it comes under the same bill, even if there's two separate meters. Because that's part of the A D U was it has to hedge share services.
Right. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right. I, I don't know if anyone else has been down there. We all know Holiday Lakeshore Drive is a less than stellar road, especially in the springtime. So obviously grading it out and cleaning that road up is an important part of this after it's built. And I believe that was pointed out by our highway supervisor.
Mark did have that in writing.
I was just looking for it there. Yeah. Will have adverse impact, normal wear and tear. Yeah, he did, he did specify that any ruts caused during delivery and work be corrected. And he urged that they join, that the A D U joins the Road Association as well. All right. I will, are there any, is there anything else from the board at this time?
The only thing I had, Mr. Chairman, was I had a discussion with Connor concerning some of the Z B A items here. And to my dismay, the questions that I had were not explicit enough to find an answer for. But I, I did research this too, and I just couldn't find all the information that I was looking for.
Do, do you have?
I think what I'm trying to do is to say that some of the files that they, they should have presented are vague. And so I just, and so is our requirement. So I just think we should look at, look at that in the past with John's help to see how we can get that a little bit better so we can have more information when we do have these meetings.
Well, more specifically, George was, George's recollection was that the, this applicant for this garage had received a variance from the zoning board can with, for the construction of the garage. That was news to me. I researched the town files by map and lot and by owner, looking for a variance or trip to the zoning board in two thousand and seventeen, and it just didn't exist. That's something John Huckins might be familiar with, or even the applicant. But the, I think Mr. Bailey was concerned that the town records didn't indicate that there was a trip to the zoning board, but his recollection was that there was.
It never went to the zoning board.
What's that, John? I didn't hear you.
The garage never went to the zoning board. They meet all the setback requirements.
And that's consistent with the records I found.
All right. Are there any other comments from the board? All right, hearing none. I will open the public comment section of the public hearing.
So if you're participating on a phone, please be patient and press star six to unmute yourself. If you unmute yourself, I'll have record of that, and I'll have the chair call on you by the last four digits of your phone number. If you're participating on the computer, you can raise your hand. Remember, you also need to unmute yourself. Please don't speak until recognized by the chair. First hand up I saw was from a Doug Safford.
Yep, Doug, if you would unmute yourself, and you have three minutes, please.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. The property is, I'm an abiding owner. I've used the property for many years for recreational purposes. As many would know, it used to be held in a trust down on a law firm down in Boston, Massachusetts. The origin of that trust are unknown to me. The land was always open and free for use and was tended by Stephen Jeffries just down the road on France Road for the purpose of logging forestry and maintenance of some rights of way that, to my knowledge, are still somewhat particular, there are two rights away to the property. One is an official right of way, one's kind of an adjunct entry. That's, that appeared about two years ago that suddenly roads were put into the entire property, connecting the Holiday Lakeshore Road to France Road. Then the property explicitly was cut off from use from the general public. I was notified that my presence on the property was no longer welcome. And in fact, received a rather threatening letter from the applicant stating that, that if I were to appear on that land again, that I would be arrested. So obviously you consider me somewhat hostile toward this proceeding. And I recognize that. However, I don't know, I tried to look up on the tax maps where this would occur, where the property would be located. I can't tell where the access would be. I don't know if it's from the France roadside. All right, I don't know if it's from the Holiday Lakeshore side. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get the town, town office to look it up because I know the answer for that. Why didn't I go look? And also I did hear that the property use has been adjusted or amended. I did look up on the property maps, the majority of this property is now it managed other, which I assume in conservation or in use. Is it fair to say that we're altering the use of this property and allowing for a building on a property that's in, that a property that's otherwise in use? And if true, was a variance issued for that? Was a public notified of that? Because I, for one, don't want to see buildings over there, particularly from this individual who has barred access for land that most of us used for many, many, many years. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
The next, the next person I saw unmute themselves was on a phone, ending in nine zero zero two.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yep, can hear you.
Yeah, this is Stephen Jeffrey. I have a number of issues. Foremost was the current use issue. It would be nice if that was resolved before this hearing. I'd like to point out that Holiday Lakeshore was never approved by the town. And when Karen merged her lots, she created basically a new lot, which has to comply with the town's current codes and standards. Now Holiday Lakeshore Drive is a three thousand foot long road approximately to where this A D U is. And in all other similar kind of situations around town, developers been required to put in a cistern. You know, there's, there's basically no source of firefighting water where those houses are. You know, there's, there's basically no source of firefighting water where those houses are, at least not accessible by fire trucks. So that really needs to be addressed. And our, the town's policy on private roads has some minimum standards. And this road, I'm, I'm pretty certain does not comply with that. And one of the issues is drainage structures. And this work done on the garage, now ADU, buried a FEMA funded drainage structure, which was constructed to prevent, uh, repeated, a repeated, uh, washout of, from that corner down to the lake. And so it's my feeling that, that FEMA funded drainage structure has to be replaced and reconstructed. Uh, I think it would be a violation of FEMA's regulations to destroy any FEMA funded project. Um, and I have an issue with our, uh, ADU, uh, provisions in zoning. And they, it certainly implies that there's a common septic system. And this, what you have now is, is basically two independent structures. Um, they're not really tied together. Uh, I think this is, uh, in conflict with the intent of the ADU, uh, consideration. And, and other than that, you know, as a, as a new lot, a new subdivision would have to provide topographic surveys with two foot elevation. And I haven't been able to find anything like that in any of these documents with the file. So, and it's my feeling that given the lack of information, that, that this application needs to be rejected and brought up again when all the information is available for all of the public to look at. So thanks.
The next hand up I had was from Steve D.
Greetings, Steve Diamond here. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. Uh, I'm here as an abutter, and, uh, one of the points I'd like to raise is to pass on, uh, some other feedback from the planning board, since I'm also on the planning board. I believe I heard Dan say that this property already has an ADU. If I heard that correctly, on the application that was given to the planning board, uh, under accessory dwelling unit questions, one was, has the applicant or the property owner ever obtained an ADU cert- certificate of use from the planning department for this property? And they said no. Uh, so if what Dan said is correct, then that was, that is an erroneous statement on the application. Also, as was, uh, commented from the planning board, um, they said no in the checkbox, uh, that says, will the ADU be located within a single family dwelling, attached to a single family dwelling, or located within an attached structure, a detached structure? If no, stop, your proposal will not qualify as an ADU. They checked no. So, um, what the planning board was wondering about that is, was that a mistake? Or is that an accurate statement, in which case it doesn't qualify as an ADU? And, uh, I know current use was brought up. Uh, I'm not quite sure. Basically, I'd like to have it clarified. Is this, is the property in question currently under current use? And would this change, uh, require a current use change tax? I noticed on our, our town website, under land use change tax, it says, if you own property that is currently classified under current use and you intend to develop, improve, subdivide and sell, or physically alter that property, it may be removed, uh, but there's a, it's subject to a current use change tax, paraphrasing again there. Uh, also, what else do I have here? One second. Um, the price, the, the value of the, of the improvement, the $7,000, six, $7,060 cost of construction, uh, especially with the shortages of lumber right now, I find that a little hard to believe. So for tax valuation purposes, I would like to make sure that that is accurate, whatever the accurate number is. And I think that might be all the points I wanted to raise. Thank you.
Uh, the next hand up I saw was Mark Pagliuca.
Am I on, or can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, awesome. Um, I just want to speak on the, on the road and the, um, I actually own a house in there as well on Holiday Lakeshore Drive. Uh, my parents have owned property in there for over 50 years. Um, that road or that property, when I actually lived there physically, um, we asked people to leave as well because it is a private road. And to my recollection, the 50 years that I've been there, it has never been open to the public to get to the lake from that road. There were other accesses on the lake to get to public access, but never through Holiday Lakeshore Drive. And we asked many people to leave continually because we maintain the road and we had people that would come in with four wheelers and other vehicles and tear the road up. And we pay dues to maintain that road every year. And we, in fact, it's being graded tomorrow. And, um, so we do maintain that road and it is actually, uh, in better shape now than it's ever been in. So, um, that's pretty much what I wanted to say far as the road goes, uh, and access. Um, at one time we had a gate at the end that we used. So that, that road has never been open to the public. I, I will dispute that. If somebody was in there, they were there without permission. That's it, I guess on that.
All right. Um, I see Doug Safford's hand up. I don't know if that hand just didn't go down or if it's back up.
I wanted to clarify just a couple moments, Mr. Chairman. When I referred to public access, it was foot traffic only. Never have I accessed the lake by Holiday Shirk Road or any parcel through Holiday Lakeshore Road. My access was off of France Road by foot.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Connor?
Um, I don't, I'm looking, um, again, if you're participating on a phone and would like to make comment, you need to press star six on your phone, unmute yourself. Um, and if you're on a computer, uh, you can raise your hand. I believe Tiffany said she, oh, okay, see somebody, um, just unmuted themselves, ending in nine three five five.
That's Karen Gould.
Great, Ms. Gould.
I just unmuted myself, yes.
Feel free.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, Holiday, uh, three, 319 Holiday Lakeshore Drive is a trust. And, uh, there is an approved septic system. Uh, I will say that I have, uh, uh, every intent to, uh, get, and to meet all the standards necessary to build this ADU, which is, uh, about a hundred feet away from 319 Holiday Lakeshore Drive. Uh, the current use, uh, issue needs to be addressed. Uh, and I obviously, uh, drop the ball on, on that. There is a well that's in, uh, and it is pumping 29 gallons a minute. There's, uh, was a tremendous amount of excavation, uh, by Jake Farrell, uh, under the structure before the garage went in just to divert the water, which is a tremendous, uh, amount of water, uh, in, in that area. Uh, the, the state, uh, the Department of Environmental Services has determined that, um, there is future drinking water on that land. Uh, the land originally was planned in 1965, early 60s, for 400 lots around, uh, the 131 acre lot, which is 26131. Um, the development never happened and for 50, 60 years, the, the land was left alone. There was no development at all, except for, uh, the development that happened on lower Holiday Lakeshore Drive by, uh, uh, Bob Williams. Uh, other than that, there's been no other development, uh, in, uh, in the entire lot area. Uh, there is electricity in the structure. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Pagliuca's, uh, mentioned, uh, the road work will be done tomorrow. Uh, the families, uh, basically have been maintaining the road for 55, 60 years, uh, in handling all road work and construction and cul- culverts and, uh, and snow removal. Um, uh, in, in, in respect to, uh, Mr. Stafford, uh, uh, Mr. uh, Safford, uh, who lives at, I believe, um, 221, um, uh, France Road, I think it's, um, 221 France Road. Uh, he wa- he was hunting on the land, uh, and I think a deer was buried in a well there and left there. And, uh, I, I'm, I'm not too familiar with it. It goes back maybe, uh, five, 10 years. Uh, but I know there was a problem and I know Mr. Jeffries had a problem with the fact that that, uh, deer was buried there and was not taken out. Um, there is a right of way from France Road to, uh, to the accessory dwelling unit, uh, that is, is being considered here. And, um, that is a, a private right of way. It is, it is, it is no public access from France Road and never has had public access. Uh, just as there's never been a, uh, pri- the Holiday Lakeshore Drive is a private road and is, uh, the only access road to, uh, Mendham's Pond, other than the, uh, M H, uh, access road, which is open maybe eight to 10 weeks of the year. Um, so I, 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 I'm happy to answer any other questions. And if I have, uh, overlooked, um, any concerns, I will address them and make the proper adjustments, uh, necessary.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Gould? Dan?
Only, I have one, is the, um, with the three names, I like to see the trust name on it. It's more clear, in case we have, uh, ongoing issues or anything. And then the price, I agree with the price. If it's a sheetrock insulation and stuff and trim, I agree, I think it can be done for that. And then, um, I didn't, on the, I never said, earlier to clarify it, I said a garage was built two or three years ago and then the intent was, was on there for the garage or storage or whatever. But I didn't ever mention ADU, about the garage.
Dan, I would just, uh, like to point out that all three names are on the, um, building permit and.
But it's been stated it's a trust, like George said.
Yeah, we can, um, we can make sure that the application information reflects the current ownership. Um, it sounds like the, the ownership in our, um, our records needs to be updated as well because it just lists the three names. So if there's a trust involved, we absolutely need to update that.
That's it.
Okay. Um, Ms. Gould, uh, would you just be able to comment on, there was, there was a statement made about a, a drainage structure being buried there? And I don't know if you have any, you, you seem to talk about extensive drainage work there. So I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm only aware that, that the water situation, uh, in that particular area is, it flows down and there's a tremendous amount of water. So the excavation work, uh, before the garage was put in was extremely extensive. And the water was diverted in, away from the house to prevent, to, to, to be on top of the issue of, of potential flooding in the future. So there's a lot of, uh, culverts that are off to the side to drain the water a- away from the house. Because the house is, is, well, the garage is basically up against a hill. So that's the best explanation I can offer, uh, in that the, the work was done by a, a, uh, a capable excavator and, and moved the water away from the house so that there would be no flooding problems in the future. Uh, and water is going to be a major problem in the future, where, whether it's too much water or drought. And, um, I'm, I'm concerned about diverting the water away from the structure. If that's, I hope that's sufficient.
Mm-hmm.
A hand was raised in the meantime from Mark Pagliuca.
All right, Mr. Pagliuca?
Yep, sorry, two things. Um, as far as the culverts, her culverts going down Holiday Lakeshore Drive, all the way down to the, to the lake. And, um, the drainage that Karen is talking about is actually drainage that she put in that, um, diverts the water away from the road, not into the road or the culverts. And then just one other last thing that I wanted to mention was, uh, when I was growing up there, um, uh, the Wilson property, which is where the gentleman was talking about walking into the Wilson property from France Road. Uh, when you got up to Holiday Lakeshore Drive, there were signs, when I was a young kid, signs all over the place, no trespassing, will be shot. And as a little kid, I never ventured down there because you would hear the gunshots every now and then. So that property was never open. That's it.
Thank you.
I, I would, I would, I would agree with, i- i- am I able to speak?
You, you are, ma'am.
Yes, uh, the, there is a lot of broken glass on the property from, um, from glass where guns were used to shoot bottles. And, uh, I think Mr. Pagliuca's right. I mean, that, that was very clearly a, uh, happening for decades, uh, on that site. Um, and I, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I mean, the, the, the whole idea of diverting the water was to keep it away from the road and, and move the water, uh, into the woods with culverts.
Thank you.
I have another hand up from Doug Safford.
All right, um, Mr. Safford, would you speak? We've just so.
I don't want, I don't want to get into a, uh, a, a conversation about wells and dirt carcasses, um, because it's not really relevant to this entire proceeding.
Correct.
But I, I can tell you that, uh, I can tell you that the state of New Hampshire fishing game, uh, I don't have the law in front of me, but you're free to look it up. If a land is not legally posted, uh, I think it's every hundred feet with a sign and the proper tax is not paid on it, any hunter is free to hunt that property until otherwise stated they cannot. So whoever the gentleman has said that land was not open is absolutely incorrect. It's completely open to public use, especially if it's in conservation, depending on its tax burden. All right, so let's, let's not say for a minute that that land has not been open for 50 years for public access. It has been, and fishing game will tell you it is. Thank you.
All right.
I don't see any more hands up or folks unmuted waiting for you.
Hey, this is Stephen Jeffrey.
No, Stephen, um, I have given everyone a chance to speak and say their, their piece. I'm gonna, um, I'll allow comment if it's relevant, but I'm not at a point where I'm going to get into a back and forth with folks.
It's about the FEMA funded culvert.
Go ahead.
At the corner of Holiday Lakeshore Drive, where it descends down to the lake, there was a culvert that went straight ahead. It didn't make that turn. And I believe it was there to carry away some of the water from the ditch line on the north side of Holiday Lakeshore Drive, down into the woods and, and, and not to deposit it in the, in the ditch along the, the, probably the west side of Holiday Lakeshore Drive as it goes down the hill. Well, that, that entire structure, the culvert and then a ditch line that continued on, that's all been buried. And that has not been, there wasn't any culverts buried in there to, to continue that drainage. I think what Karen was talking about was the drainage for the ADU from her excavation. She's got drainage around the foundation that, that, that is diverted away from the road. If that clarifies things for you.
Is Connor is, uh, John, are you? Is Connor is, uh, John, are you available? John Huckins?
Yes, I am.
Um, is there anything that you can comment on FEMA structures? I don't, I don't know anything about a FEMA structure on there and I haven't seen it.
I don't know anything about a FEMA structure. Um, there was no recorded easement up across that property for any type of drainage when they came in with their application for the garage.
Ma'am, I just, my, this is Karen Gould again.
It's your application, so it's your nickel. Go ahead.
Okay, I, I just want to, uh, clarify my reason for the accessory dwelling unit is that I have spent, I have had my lake house and lived in my lake house summers for forty years. Uh, and, uh, I have recently become a New Hampshire resident. Uh, I have, have been for a couple of winters, living in the lake house. It has fifty-five steps down to the lake. And that once I'm, and then I have to go up fifty-five steps to get to my car and then drive up to the top of the hill, which is a steep hill. Uh, with advance, advancing age, uh, just south of eighty, it's, it's necessary for me to be safe and on high ground in the future. And that's the reason for having this accessory dwelling unit so that I am not in danger in the future of going down a steep hill and then, uh, climbing down fifty-five steps. Uh, so that is the, the, the reason why I'm, I'm building this, uh, for safety reasons and, um, and hopefully, uh, you know, a, a longer life and not hurting myself. So if I wasn't clear with some of the septic issues or the, uh, uh, I will address the current use adjustment. Uh, that will be addressed and, uh, we'll clarify any questions regarding the trust. And, um, you know, I, I really want to work with the, with the staff and I'm sorry if I wasn't, uh, clear in my application, but I will clarify it. Uh, uh, this is the first time I've, I've filled out a permit before, so, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification.
Like motion?
I would like, I would quote, close public comment first at this point. Um, I don't see any other folks looking to speak that have not already spoke. So I'll give final notice before I close public comment.
I see nothing further on my end, Mr. Chair.
All right, then I will close public comment. Um, Jim, you said you would like to make a motion. How would you like to structure your motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the, uh,
Can I ask you to hold that thought for one second? Cause I see Mr. Bailey's hand up and if there's a motion on the floor, I've got to tend to the motion before I address comments. So select person Bailey?
I would ask, uh, that we consider a, uh, continuance on this. So some of the comments made by the participant and by the other individuals that were here that we have a chance to investigate those. And I'd like to continue this to the next, uh, select board meeting. That way there would be fair, not only to the applicant, but to everybody else that had comment.
So which items would you be looking to have addressed in a continuance?
Well, the, uh, first off is that we talked about the, uh, water and how the water goes down to the hill. That was part of, not, I know it wasn't part of it. We have, uh, the roads that were closed and, uh, I just, uh, I think that we should, uh, further investigate some of the comments made to make sure that we're doing, uh, true diligence.
Uh, if you'd like to ask questions, Mr. Bailey, there might be questions, um, that we have right now. Uh, I don't think there's any roads closed. Um, it sounds like prior owners of the private property allowed public access and current owners don't. Um, that's certainly their right to do so. Um, as far as the drainage down the hill, it sounds like, uh, Mr. Huckins was not presented with any easement information about other drainage structures. Uh, but if you have additional questions, we can certainly try to answer them, um, for you tonight.
I, I understand where we're going with this and I just asked to comment and I did not make a motion. I just asked to, uh, for a continuance to be considered by the board. And if the board doesn't want to consider it, oh, well, then good. Then you can, then, uh, Mr. Sakosha can turn around and, uh, uh, speak next because he was after me. Thank you.
Well, he was actually before you, but I stopped him in the midst of speaking to address your issue.
Okay, thank you for doing that, Mr. Chairman.
Because I, I, I would prefer that the board gets it all out on the table before there's a motion there. I know there's concern over, um, the FEMA, potentially a FEMA drainage structure, but if there's a FEMA drainage structure, that's got to exist in a FEMA document somewhere. And I would assume exists somewhere within the town. Um, which I would be, if we were going to have a motion, that would have to be part of, I, I would hope that that would be part of the motion or for me that would be, have to be part of a motion. Um, you know, I think we've addressed the building, we've addressed the water, the sewer. Um, I believe the current use would have to be addressed as well. Um, for that.
Well, let, let's work on a motion. I don't mean to hop in here, but, um, you know, cause I, I'm with George and the aspect is I, I want to help these people out because obviously we did hear her story. Um, it's not like they're putting up a, you know, at a four-story, um, bachelor pad with, you know, at six bathrooms and, you know, gonna bring, you know, everybody and their brother up on the weekend, um, from the sounds of it. Dan, I, what about the, the roads? I mean, how do you feel on the, the FEMA drain? And I mean, is this anything familiar with you?
I don't know anything about that FEMA whatever, but Bell and Flynn, my knowledge, have been doing all the work. Today at four ten, a load of gravel went by my property, so they're heading to Hemlock for us. So I do believe that Bell and Flynn will be there tomorrow. So the road will be fixed up tomorrow. So I'll see the trucks going by. And only the question I have, I brought up was a trust. The three names and they would state that there is a trust and Connor agrees and he's be cleaned up for our records. That's it for me.
So let's get a, let's, let's do a list real quick of, of what we need for, you know, for them to do and what we need from them. And then get this into a motion.
So, so looking at that, um, well, this is what I'm just trying to make sure is we capture the items we want to, um, clarify that way we're not amending motions and we're not redoing any of this. So, um, obviously just to verify that there is or is not a FEMA structure there, addressing the current use, addressing, uh,
The trust.
The trust, thank you. Um, are there other items that we want to make sure are raised in that issue? Nothing from the board. Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Oof, oof, um, so I would like to make a motion to, well, um, to approve contingent on, um, cleaning up the trust, uh, finding out about the, uh, NEMA drainage. And did I miss one thing?
Uh, current re, the realignment of use.
Yeah, and the realignment of current use issues get solved and come back for the next meeting once, once they're all solved.
Well, typically if you issue, you could issue, it'd be the issuance of a building permit contingent upon those items being addressed satisfactorily with the town.
Correct. Does that sound good with everybody else?
So is that your motion?
That, that, that is my motion.
All right, Dan, Danon?
Well, I was gonna say, maybe we, the motion should be, and you, and we won't have, we haven't seconded it yet, but you might do it, is that we table this, uh, item until we get those things straightened out and we can name them. I, I'm just, and maybe it'll be done in the next meeting.
All right, and that aligns with George's request?
Yes, the motion is tabled.
So I have, I have a, I have a, I have a motion for the issuance of a building permit for lot two, for map two sixty-one, lot thirty-one dash two one zero five zero five for the issuance of a building permit um, on Holiday Lake Shore Drive. Is there a second for that motion?
I would like to revoke my motion and go with Dan's motion proposal.
So select person Sakosha has rescinded his motion. Select person Man Shrek has made a motion to, um, to put forth the addressing the, I determining if there was ever a drainage structure put in place by FEMA there, the current use and the trust.
Yeah, basically the motion is to table.
Right, to table pending reser, uh, resolution of those items, correct?
Yeah, that is, yes.
Well, like, I mean, to table it is one thing, but I think you have to have something very prescriptive that we're trying to address, which would be why it would be being tabled.
Perfect, perfect choice you made.
Chair, nap?
I hate to agree with you, but yes.
You keep saying that. I, you're gonna come around here. All right, um, Connor, do you have a comment?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say that the current use item is in progress. There's going to be, I mean, it's as, it's as in progress now as it will be at the next meeting. The assessor's aware. Um, there's the, the building inspector, uh, sent the information to the, um, assessing office in two thousand sixteen. Um, the property owner did everything right, provided an updated map, um, which, which shows the area that needed to be taken out of current use. Um, in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen, the assessing office simply failed uh, to properly update the records and issue the land use change tax. Um, so, so that, we know everything about that, um, that issue to allow it to be resolved. The assessor's been made aware. Um, they plan to visit the property next week, um, to update, uh, their records and, and proceed accordingly. Um, as far as the ownership, I mean, ownerships change all the time. Anybody that's put property into a trust, um, you're not required to record trusts at the registry. Um, so, you know, allowing the property owner to show us documents that shows that now there's a trust can update that ownership. Um, that as far as the FEMA structure, I think even if there was a FEMA structure, unless there was an easement requiring it to stay there, um, it, it, I don't, uh, I, I fail to understand what the concern would be. Um, and like Mr. Huckins said, there was no, um, in the information he reviewed, there was no easement on that property requiring a, a drainage easement. Um, so I, I just want to make sure if, if you're expecting town staff to do, uh, additional um, work prior to the next meeting, I want to make sure I know what it is because, uh, from my perspective, a lot of that is, um, is already in, in place or understood.
Yep, my, my only concern is that we have, uh, as we have proven tonight, sometimes things get missed in our documentation. And I would just want to make sure that, uh, we have verified that there is not an easement somewhere in place that we don't have recorded appropriately that should be. Um, and not that they're, not that I'm saying that it, that that's what happened, but just as um, a way to make sure that it's done. And I don't know if it needs to be postponed. It's just one of those, I would say it would be contingent, approval will be contingent upon verification of.
Right, and the board regularly makes conditional approvals, but that's different than tabling. So I just wanted to make sure, um, we knew which direction we were going.
I, I understand, but I have, I'm going based on the motions that have been presented here from the board.
Great.
So I have a motion to table based on correction of the trust, um, addressing the current use, which is in process and verification of um, a fee, of a drainage structure that has an easement against it placed by FEMA. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Sorry, what was that?
Second.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Um, George, is your hand up for a reason or is it just still up?
That's my fault, let me.
I can do it, George.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Man Shrek, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Nap, no. All right. So it is tabled, um, or this is, yeah, tabled until um, items have been addressed and then it would be brought back before the board for approval. Any final comments? Hearing none from the board, I am moving on.
You have to close.
Oh, no, public comment was closed a while ago. Um, I am closing all public hearings at this time. So public hearings are completed. All right. Next item on the agenda are appointments. Um, there are no actual appointments, but we have the, uh, we have two proclamations to read. One is a proclamation for EMS Week, which is May sixteenth to the twenty-second of twenty twenty-one. Whereas emergency medical service, services is a vital public service and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to qualified, to quality emerg, emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical service, services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specify, specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designated emergency medical services week. Um, now therefore we, the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board, together with our residents in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May sixteenth to the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one as Emergency Medical Services Week in the town of Barrington. With the EMS Strong theme, this is EMS caring for our communities. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. In, in wit, witness thereof, um, we have here unto our hand and cause the seal of the town of Barrington to affix this tenth day of May twenty-first, Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you very much.
Like we, make a motion and a vote.
Um, so do you want me to read them both first or do them each individually?
Oh, that's up to you.
Okay, I was going to go, read both proclamations and then motion them separately. So the second one is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is also May sixteenth to the twenty-second of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities and services are of vital importance to the sustainable communities and to the health, safety and wellbeing of the public, of the people of Barrington. And whereas our public works department encompasses both our highway department and our transfer station and recycling center. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to recognize the dedicated professionals who plan, construct and maintain the many public services that keep Barrington vibrant. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is um materially influenced by the citizens attitude and understanding and of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas we recognize the importance of public works professionals and other ally allied professionals and workers and pay tribute to them for their contribution to our town. And now, therefore, we, the Barrington, New Hampshire Select Board, together with our residents in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May sixteenth through the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one as National Public Works Week in the town of Barrington. All right, do I have a motion to um a motion to make May sixteenth to the twenty-second National EMS Week?
I'm so vote.
Seconded, roll call vote.
I'm glad air that they're getting recognized. And I wish the select board could get recognized, but we don't, so air eye.
Bailey eye.
Man Shrek eye.
You're muted, Jim.
Sakosha.
All right, and Napi. The other, the second one being, I'm looking for a motion for May sixteenth to the twenty-second for National Public Works Week.
So I'm vote.
Seconded, roll call vote.
I'm glad they're getting recognized, but the selectman asked, so air eye.
Bailey eye.
Man Shrek eye. Sakosha.
And Napi. All right, uh, this is the first of two public comments. Um, so I will open public comment and remind folks that they are limited to three minutes.
Uh, if you're participating on a phone, press star six to unmute yourself. If you're on a computer, you can raise your hand or enter a a comment in the chat feature. See nothing coming through on my end, Mr. Chair.
Yep, I don't see anything either. We'll give it uh thirty seconds or so to see if there's any anyone who's unmuting or anything.
Yep, still quiet on my side.
All right, I will close the first public comment. Um, review of minutes for April twenty-six. Looking for a motion to approve minutes for April twenty-six.
So I'm vote. Yeah, I I misspoke when I talked about my uh about the school board meeting. It says, I said, I guess, that there were two openings on the school board for next year. That was incorrect. It was there two uh there were two vacancies that were discussed for uh new uh teachers in by the school board. So I think Tiffany wrote it down correctly. I misspoke. I don't know if we need to change that. And I'll modify it for tomorrow for today rather.
We can make that change. We can make that update.
Yeah, sorry, my fault.
Mr. Chairman, on our last opening for uh public comment, Melissa had her name put in. I don't know if she's gonna make a comment or not.
I don't, I didn't.
No, I just, I just made that comment, sir.
Yep, I didn't see anyone with a hand up or anything, anyone looking to make a comment. All right, so I will second the motion to approve with the amendment for minutes. That select person Bailey made. Um, roll call vote.
Air eye.
Bailey eye.
Man Shrek eye. Sakosha.
Napi. All right, let's keep this train moving here. Um, staff reports.
Yes, thank you. Three things. Um, first, uh, oh, shoot, I just now noticed that in my uh my report, the work anniversaries are listed as April anniversaries. Please accept my sincerest apologies. These are actually May work anniversaries. Um, but I am glad to recognize the tenure of these employees as they celebrate work anniversaries this month. Um, first, Don Mallett, firefighter for twenty-three years. Uh, Kim Carrickus, our esteemed town clerk uh for twenty-one years. Uh, Antonio Maggio, the EMS chief for nineteen years. Wendy Rowe, the assistant library director for seventeen years, the children's librarian. Uh, Matt Parker, firefighter EMT for eight years. John Abbott, deputy building inspector for six years. Jeffrey Rube, firefighter EMT for six years. Charles Kogor, transfer station attendant for three years. Richard Wentworth, transfer station attendant for three years. Joseph Spinney, firefighter for three years. Jeremy Bacon, one of our full-time firefighter EMTs for two years. And Regina Lidle, town clerk assistant for two years. Uh, again, thank you for those employees for their continued tenure and service to the town of Barrington. Uh, second thing is I uh just wanted to make mention related to National Public Works Week. Um, they are planning a pet food drive um for that week, uh similar in in structure to the um N sixty-eight Hours of Hunger Food Drive. Um, look for information uh on that forthcoming. Um, and there'll be collection spots and details about where that pet food will be going. Uh, third, for the board and community's edification, um, I uh worked with the chair nap in his role as a member of the TurboCam team. Um, he will be utilizing the uh plotter in the planning department to take uh some large files at TurboCam and digitize them uh for both TurboCam's files and for the town's files, um, facility and system information. Um, so I've authorized that use. Um, and that's all that I have.
All right, um, I do have a a question on the staff reports here. I was just curious, Connor, when you became municipal office administrator McIver?
Oh, I'm two for two. I'm hiring all cylinders. You know, the funny thing is, that's probably been that way in a couple of reports, and nobody's seen it. I'm gonna check the last week.
Uh, I think I would have caught that one.
The last meeting. Um.
What a way to deflect it.
Yes, oh, no. Oh, yeah, it was that way on the on the April twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, I'll get that. I'll get that corrected along with the work anniversaries. Again, please accept my sincerest apologies.
So uh now that we know you're what all the work that you're doing, um, unfortunately, uh poor municipal office administrator Cottle, who's not getting to do anything.
High and dry.
So uh Tiffany, if you would like to share your things, and I would also just like to say, um, next time you're at the Beach Plum, you can say hello to me when I'm sitting next to you.
You know, I thought that was you, but I got like a glimpse and I was fighting with my children, so I apologize.
I I was like, kind of waved, and then I was like, oh, okay, maybe she doesn't recognize me.
I apologize. I thought about it afterwards. I thought, it was that Andy? And clearly it was, okay.
I I was like, maybe, okay, maybe it's not, and I'm just picking the I I'm it's not who I think it is because, you know, you weren't in your professional clothes, but then uh the bumper stickers confirmed it.
Guilty, guilty, definitely.
All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, requesting for signatures. Um, after correction, I'll be sending out the meeting minutes for the select board meeting for Monday, April twenty-sixth. Um, I'll also note that if it's approved, it hasn't been approved yet. Um, I will be requesting the twenty twenty-one first half tax warrant. Um, that'll be tonight. If it could possibly be reviewed and signed by tomorrow um in order to ensure a timely submission to the DRA, Linda would very much appreciate it. Linda, our tax collector. Um, additionally, Chairperson Nap, you will receive separately a private road agreement for map one seventeen lot three. That'll be digital. And then some wet signatures are going to be required this this time around, if you guys don't mind. Um, there will be eight eviction notices, six copies of each if they are approved tonight. Um, so bring an extra pen for that one. And then Chairperson Nap, if you don't mind signing the two proclamations that were just approved.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you much.
I'll just do everything wet.
All right, select person air.
I acknowledge wet signatures, so I'll be in touch.
Thank you. And I believe select person Man Shrek will be out of town starting tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yeah, but I'll I can uh check in uh tomorrow morning and do the wet signing if if it's available.
All right. Okay. Um, under old business, twenty twenty-one paving paving projects, uh, updates and adjustments. Connor, do you want to take the floor on this?
Yep, I can start, and I see Mark's on. He can be available to fill in the blanks or add additional comments. So, um, as you know, when we reviewed the contract uh for advance or awarding the paving projects, we knew we would be making some adjustments. Now, we planned for these adjustments last year. Our highest hopes and dreams were be uh to be able to have the engineering and drainage work done um on Malago from Stone Farm to one twenty-five. Uh, we knew that was a reach, so we planned for an alternative. Um, it's definitely gonna take, um, we'll we'll need this year to do the engineering and the drainage construction. So we've removed that section from the uh paving list for this year. Um, and what Mark has proposed in its place um is the the section of Beauty Hill from Hall Road um to just a couple hundred feet shy of the uh Route one twenty-five, so almost all of Hall Road. Um, which that's listed as uh or almost all of Beauty Hill, excuse me. Uh, that's listed as number nine, and then number ten, which is Pond Hill Road, which would be from about Camp Fireside to the intersection of Second Crown Point and Pond Hill Road. Um, I'll make note that uh we were fortunate to have competitive paving prices um which allowed us to come in um under the estimate and allow us to add the additional scope of work. Uh, additionally, this list as presented totals seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, almost eight hundred thousand. The board had planned to spend seven hundred and seventy-five thousand this year. Um, Mark does anticipate that there'll be some continued savings in some of these projects. Um, he's estimated high on uh material usage, specifically on Malago, um adding stone. Um, so so we think that's a conservative budget, but certainly if we did need to spend the seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, um, we do have additional funds available in that um cap uh transportation fee capital reserve um that we were planning to use a hundred and seventy-five thousand from. Um, so there there remains a balance of about three hundred and fifty thousand in there. Um, and so we'd be looking for the board's support to authorize those adjustments to the paving projects.
Dan, you have your hand up?
Yes, I uh want to recognize Beauty Hill Road. Um, I support it, and the engineer's estimate was five hundred, seven hundred and fifty and a million dollars to reconstruct it. So I'm glad of the hard work. We we have the numbers and putting this project together. And then I like to see my personal thought that backdoor reconstruction, the engineers don't go overboard on that, but time will tell. Um, I'm not making comment yet, so I have no facts. But I like the hard work, putting this list together, and I want the board to notice the savings on that road. Thank you.
Yep. Is there a motion for the paving projects uh update and adjustment? I'll make the motion for the paving projects up updates and adjustment with the um amended road plan as noted by Connor.
Second.
Seconded by select person Bailey.
Air eye.
Bailey eye.
Man Shrek eye.
Sakosha.
Napi. Connor, do you also need us to make a motion to expand further funding from the um sorry, my brain is.
Yes, you definitely could. If you'd like to, I would entertain a motion to authorize expanding up to two hundred thousand dollars from the transportation fee capital reserve.
Yep, so I'll make the motion as well to expend up to two hundred thousand dollars from the transportation um fee capital reserve.
Second.
Seconded by select person Man Shrek. Roll call vote.
Air eye.
Bailey eye.
Man Shrek eye.
Sakosha.
And Napi.
And I'll continue to keep you updated, Mark and I will, um regarding the expenditures towards paving. Like I said, I'm hopeful we don't, we won't need the full eight hundred thousand. Um, but I appreciate the flexibility, and I'll be glad to keep you up to date.
Um, recreation project update, um, is Jesse on, and would she like to talk about the continued ongoing work from the recreation department?
I see her there. She just unmutes herself. The floor will be hers.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Um, so I just wanted to just quickly update you guys on a couple of projects um that we had previously presented to you guys. Um, and unfortunately, we're kind of put on the back burner due to COVID. Um, so at this time, we currently have an R F Q out for the recreation uh gym walls, including that fire separation. Uh, we're hoping to have that um installed, but through, starting the end of August, right at the end of camp, uh ending at the most likely the middle to end of September. Um, the other two projects that we um had already presented were the gym floor as well as the bleachers. So we have reached out to the companies that we had already um presented and kind of gotten approval for. And we have agreements to move forward with them as soon as those gym walls are installed. So again, we're thinking most likely that October, uh end of September, October timeframe with the hopes that the gym will be available by November to kind of start up our basketball programs that we have um as we're shifting it out of those um, you know, for those fall sports. Um, and then the last project that we have uh is an RFP for shade structures for the town playground. Uh, this is something that we have had, you know, tremendous feedback from the community on. Uh, for those of you who have spent even a short amount of time down there, especially in the summer, you feel like an ant under a microscope down there. It is just brutally hot. Uh, there's really no escaping the sun, so that was something that we um as the commission had kind of looked at. So at this point, the RFP is advertised with a deadline of June third uh where the rec commission will then um give our recommendation to the select board for their final approval on the June fourteenth select board meeting. Um, so at this time, those are the projects that we have kind of earmarked for that twenty twenty-one year. Um, again, some of them were already presented, but we just wanted to let you guys know that they were uh kind of in motion again now that we're coming out of COVID. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you very much for the update, and thank you for all the hard work the recreation department and the rec commission are doing to make make play a better place for the tech kids in Barrington and and the adults. All right, um, evictions.
Yes, so um as you're aware, um, in August of last year, we um taxed deed with certain properties that were eligible. Um, the there were certain restrictions at the state and federal level uh which caused delay for evictions. Um, the, you know, when the town takes a takes ownership of a property, especially if it's occupied, it's a tremendous liability to the town. Um, the the town is in a posi- is not in a position to be a landlord. Um, and so it's important to execute on uh evictions as soon as possible to limit that liability to the town. And so um I am um glad to say that we have prepared all of the paperwork, dotted the i's, crossed the t's uh to proceed with evictions on four properties that are occupied from um uh the tax deeding of last year. Um, listed in my report is map twenty-three lot twenty-five, map one oh two lot forty-nine, map one oh four lot one hundred, and map one oh nine lot seventeen. Um, and I'd be looking for a motion and a vote from the select board to authorize evictions on those four properties.
Select person Man Shrek, did you just put your hand up?
I did. Uh, I I know that now there there are no restrictions on uh evictions, but I I'm not sure I like the um or I like the the optics. I hate to use that word, but I'm not sure I like the optics. But is there a reason why these people haven't paid and why they continue to live there? Have we addressed that with them?
So, yes, the um, I I might not understand your question completely, but the um the tax lien and tax deeding process um is is really a three, almost four-year process. Um, and so we're in close contact with, um, we at least attempt to be in close contact with property owners through the entire process. Um, each year during um the the time of tax deeding, which is in August in Barrington, um, the select board is presented with um opportunities for deed waivers um which gives the the select board an opportunity to review specific circumstances um and issue a deed waiver for those situations that the select board feel warrants it. Um, sometimes if folks are in bankruptcy or if they um have small balances um or if they are on a successful payment plan, um, the select board has issued deed waivers. Um, and so the um, to your point about has the town, are we familiar with uh each of these uh individuals? uh, individuals', uh, personal circumstances and, um, what has contributed to their inability to pl- to pay? Um, I can tell you that we certainly have tried to be, but, uh, we may not have been successful, um, in contacting each one of them. Uh, we're very fortunate to have an incredibly passionate tax collector in Linda Markowitz. Um, you know, there's, there's what's required by law, uh, and then there's about twice as much which Linda does, um, while working with, um, taxpayers, uh, to include sending a litany of, uh, letters that are not required, um, simply reaching out, um, to, uh, let them know what their balances are, what steps they can take. Um, it was really at Linda's direction, um, that we included the, um, exemption and credit eligibility information with all of the tax bills, um, last year, uh, because she felt like there was taxpayers out there that might not be aware of the assistance that's available to them. Um, so like I said, the town makes, uh, many efforts to work with taxpayers, but, uh, we don't always have, um, a, a willing participant on the other side. And, um, the select board, uh, is tasked with the unfortunate duty of, um, accepting tax collector deeds and dealing with the consequences of, of being a landlord.
Okay, thank you, just, I wasn't aware. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So looking for a motion for, to, um, complete the eviction process, the issuance of eviction notices.
So moved.
Seconded by select person air, roll call vote.
Do we have to name everyone or?
Yep.
There, you can, I'm assuming we can do this as one piece noting, as noted in the, um, town administrator's report.
I agree.
So it's roll call, it's, it was motioned by select person Bailey, seconded by select person air, roll call vote.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Uh, Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Napi.
Moving on to, uh, new business, twenty twenty-one property tax record, um, preservation moose plate grant, that time of year.
Yes, third year in a row, just looking for authorization for the tax collector to pursue this grant opportunity. She has been successful two years in a row now and preserved three tax ledgers. Um, we're hopeful that, um, she will be able to secure additional funds.
I'll motion that.
Second.
Seconded by select person Mantrick, roll call vote.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Napi.
All right. Um, the next item, uh, as Tiffany pointed out, was the twenty twenty-one first half property tax warrant, uh, which is for property tax year running from April first through March thirty-first, with the assessed value of the property is as a condition on April first. The looking for a motion for the first half property tax warrant. I know no one likes to pay property taxes, people, but we gotta do it, it's our responsibility.
So moved.
Motioned by select person Mantrick. I'll second it. So seconded by select person nap. Roll call vote.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Napi.
Man, that was the most unenthusiastic road I've heard all night.
And Mr. Chair, two things if you don't mind.
Yes.
Um, first, I just want to make sure to, to point out, um, to the select board and the community, something really positive, um, which is the growth in the tax base, um, which, you know, every year, um, at April first, uh, we, we review the, uh, assessed values and, um, prepare for the warrant. Um, our, uh, growth was, uh, over fifteen million dollars this year in assessed value. And that's all new construction, renovations, additions. Um, this picks up things like the new childcare center in town and the Journey Church, um, the houses on Meeting House, um, the work that's been done throughout town. Uh, that represents almost one and a half percent of our total assessed value. Um, and as indicated in my report, is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in real property taxes. And so when we talk about expanding the tax base and the impact on the growth in town, uh, it's important to point out, um, where that shows up and, and how we experience that. And so that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of property tax funds, which we don't have to be ra- which don't have to be raised, um, on, on current residents. That's new value in town that shares the burden. Um, so I just wanted to make mention of that. That's a positive thing for Barrington. That's where we see the growth, um, in those numbers. Um, the second thing is, uh, I sent out the final draft in an email today to select board members and department heads. Um, the informational tax bill insert that we intend to include in every tax bill. Um, we've received some good comments, um, including one from select person air, uh, to make sure that, uh, there's a note that says, um, all masks are encouraged, uh, in town departments, um, as indicated by the select board. Um, and so that will be, um, included in, in everybody's, um, tax bill, every property owner. Um, it covers topics, um, like hours of the tax clerk, uh, town clerk's office, dog likes licensing, information about our voter purge, the recreation needs assessment, Facebook, the partial statistical update, library availability, transfer station summer hours, and ten-digit dialing. Um, so, uh, look for that in your tax bills and, uh, if you folks as select board members hear questions or comments from the community, um, that's where they're getting their information. Thank you.
Next person air.
I'd like to call my new business.
Uh, well, we're not calling on your new business at this time, because we're doing first, we just finished, we're, we're, we're letting Connor finish first half property tax businesses. Is the board open, is the board open to accepting new business that is not part of our scheduled agenda?
Bailey, aye.
Dan, and you're muted. Yep, Dan is, uh, saying yes. Jim, are you open to it?
American language, aye.
Yep. Um, okay, so go ahead, Dan. New business.
I want to bring attention to the private road standards and stuff. If states in there and it's available on our website, it says the road shall have a sixteen-foot width, the surface two-foot shoulders. That's common. The road should be finished with four inches of gravel. My problem is the four inches of gravel, that doesn't meet our regulations of, how did the prior select board come up with that? Coverage, turnarounds, all that, but that's all I'm saying. Something like that could come back and haunt us. How we, we go by the standard policy, we don't really follow it, and I'm really concerned about the four inches. How did that ever come up? It doesn't, it's not consistent with either policies in town.
What I'm hearing is you'd like a review of the classics and private road agreement policy, um, and the, uh, the potential review of updating the four inches of gravel to reflect six inches of gravel consistent with the standards of the, um, subdivision regulations.
Right, or nothing. How can we put on something, it doesn't make sense to me.
Right, I, I think the hard part there is, are, are we going to tell every person that wants to do anything on a private road now that they have to go put six inches of gravel on a road that doesn't already exist?
Well, that's why they get rid of it. How, how did, how did that ever come up? Why is it there?
The policy contemplates that though, Andy, the, in the paragraph above where select person air is talking about, um, it makes it clear that, that the select board will make exceptions, especially for, um, single family, single homes on single properties. Um, and so it, it gives the select board the, the latitude to act as it has.
I, I guess the piece that I struggle with there is at what point, short of, um, like a subdivision, at what point would you ever need to upgrade a road then?
The intent, as I understand it, is, is for subdivision, for the, the expanded growth. Um, but our building inspector has raised his hand, he might have something to offer to the topic.
John?
The four-inch gravel come out of the geometrics designed for low-volume roads, um, which is what that whole idea was behind that classics and private roads. It's, uh, it's actually a DOT standard. The other question about if above one and two families, so let's say someone came in and they wanted to put a duplex on a private road, then the selectman would say, we can't waive this policy because this is not for a single home on a single lot. So therefore, you know, they would have to put that four inches of gravel down or show that there is already four inches there.
Okay.
So in essence, if they're building a single home, then they don't have to do it, but if, if it goes to duplex, then they have to unless for that road, unless they proved otherwise. Is that correct, John?
That's how the policy is written today, because the exemption is for a single family on a single lot. Um, and it includes, the single family includes the ADUs because when the state adopted it, they said that an ADU was considered a single family because of how that regulations was written to where ADUs could be built on any lot of record where a single home could be without having any increase in, um, use. You know, so you can't say you need more frontage, you need more area, any of the other stuff, they, that whole thing about the ADUs, they were really strict on what the towns could do and couldn't do.
Thank you, John.
All right. Dan, so are you, are you still looking to have that amended or does that provide the clarity you were looking for?
That's enough clarity for me, but I didn't, I didn't understand it as reading it, in a simple farmer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Learn something. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you for sharing the information, John. Appreciate you enlightening the board to that information. Select persons reports, select person air.
One more item on the agenda, Andy.
I'm sorry, what's that?
One more item on the agenda, town clerk availability adjustment.
Oh, as I say, what did I miss? Um, to, oh, the town clerk office availability adjustment, which is right in front of my face and I went right on past it. Connor, you wanna, you wanna talk about our expanded hours and?
Yeah, so this is just very simple update to the board and the community. Um, so the town clerk's office, uh, made adjustments during COVID and the, um, uh, shutdown and scale back consistent with the Department of Transportation, uh, limiting, uh, availability to appointment only. We've had tremendous success with the online appointment, um, scheduling program, um, and we intend to keep that, um, in part. Uh, but we also understand that it's important to be available, um, to the public for walk-up service. Um, and so the adjustments that have been made starting today is that on Mondays and Thursdays, um, for the full office availability, no appointment is necessary. Um, so anybody is welcome to come, um, without any advance notice. Um, Mondays and Thursdays are generally the busiest days down in that office. Um, great opportunity to, to get your stuff done if, if you haven't made an appointment ahead of time. Um, that said, there's a lot of residents who, uh, would still prefer to make an appointment or would prefer the confidence to know that, um, when they show up at the town clerk's office, um, they will be the only one in the service area, um, so they're not put into a situation where they feel uncomfortable, um, with the proximity to their neighbors. And so on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, um, the office will remain by appointment only. Um, and so you can call, make those appointments, or if you're able to, go online to B I T dot L Y forward slash B A R R T C appointments, uh, or appointment, excuse me, um, to schedule an appointment. Um, so thank you for letting me share that, um, and, and hopefully we'll have continued positive feedback from folks experiencing the town clerk's office.
All right, select persons report, select person air.
Um, so Town Land had a meeting Saturday and they clarified a bunch of properties and stuff, and we should be getting a list pretty soon on their recommendations and stuff. And, um, they've been doing a little hard work and stuff, and then, um, they want to wrap up this list for auction or a button of a, the board, which is to do, and then move on to Gary. So we're working on that soon as possible, and that's gonna be a timely project. And conservation, I think our, uh, we may I never do that much report, so, thanks.
All right. Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. I don't have anything to report, but meetings are starting up from this date forward.
All right, select person Mantrick.
Um, been to the school board meeting, um, last Tuesday, the fourth of May. They've hired quite a few people, which is looking good for them. Uh, there's a bunch more coming later this month. Apparently they feel like they're gonna have a pretty good crowd, and this is a tough year, uh, to hire people, so they're pleased with that. They are having a school board workshop, which is a public meeting on the first of June. And if you need or want to attend that, um, you can, uh, go through this, uh, this board office. They're also having an administrative re- retreat, which is just the, um, the school administration people uh, in August. There, I think I told you last week, the, or the last meeting, that there, uh, the last day is the eighteenth of June for students and the twenty-third for teachers. Thank you. Uh, the A B C and the, um, transfer station did not meet.
All right. Select person Sakosh.
I think Jesse did a great job summing it up on what we get going on in the recreation department, so we'll need to repeat it. Uh, planning board met this past Tuesday. Um, they, uh, there was a applicant for site review to add a five thousand square foot storage building um, up on, uh, Tollend Road in the regional commercial district. It was reviewed and, um, approved. There was a application, there was a continuance for, uh, to a subdivision. Um, there was also a, um, site review for Cozy's to, um, that was approved for expanded outdoor dining, part of one of the ru- regulations that we had waived site review for prior, um, but had kicked back in in June. Um, and then there was also, um, another request that came before the board, um, looking for residential sl- kind of slash commercial space. So it's really a commercial space, because it was in a business zone that, um, they were sent back with a lot of questions that still needed to be addressed and worked through. Um, the technology committee meets tomorrow at four o'clock. And that is all that I have from, uh, my committees. All right, any final, Dan, I see your hand up.
Uh, Jim, I made an observation Saturday. The derby was Saturday, correct? Um, I don't know if that's a, on their own with our prior activity, but there was a lot of people there.
Yes, it was pretty successful. Actually had a buddy go down.
All right, um, any other commentary from the board before I open the final public comment? Hearing none, um, I will open final public comment.
Chief Walker has his hand up.
Just a reminder, there's three minutes for public comment.
Thank you. Um, and I apologize for not hitting the first public comment. Um, on behalf of the, uh, three-hundredth anniversary committee, we're requesting the, uh, selectmen, uh, free up, allow us to take two thousand dollars out of the, uh, revolving, uh, trust fund to, uh, purchase, uh, shirts and hats, uh, to sell as we move toward the, uh, three-hundredth anniversary.
Would you like them to take that action tonight, Rick?
Yes, if they could.
I think motion.
Second.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Sakosh, aye.
Well, you know, uh, aye.
I'm gonna make all of you guys buy a hat too, so. Yeah, we'll get you a senior citizen discount, George.
George pays double then, right?
That's right. Thank you.
I know we got free hats because we didn't get a week dedicated to us, according to Dan.
Free? Free, I'm starting to get chest pain.
Yes, I'd like a free one too. Does that help your chest?
Well, it made it a whole lot better, George.
Anything else, Rick? All right, Rick's good. Any other public comment? Hearing none, I will close public comment. And then do we have anything for non-public tonight, Connor?
No.
Select person Air.
I got legal.
So anything, moving forward, I would like anything that you have for public, for non-public, to be submitted to Connor in advance, please, so that we are using our time judiciously.
All right, it's gonna be quick.
All right, Connor, will you send out a invite for non-public to the board?
Yes, I will.
All right, then we will be, then roll call vote to enter non-public.
Air I.
Bailey abstain.
Mantrick I.
Sakosha abstain.
Your vote doesn't matter. It's gonna be two to whatever.
Yep, yeah, Nap I. All right, we will come back from public to officially end the meeting afterward. Select person Mantrick.
Yeah, just, I believe, actually, I learned it that our New Hampshire Municipal Association, that an abstention then becomes part of the majority vote. So actually, it was a 5-0 vote.
That's correct.
Yep. I know, that's why voting no wouldn't do me any good anyway, so. All right. I'm waiting for.
Working on it.
Yep, now I get it.
Where do we have to go to get this link? Just back to the?
Connor's gonna send it to us.
Connor's gonna send it to us right here.
Yeah, it's gonna be in your email, Danan.
All right, that's always a problem. That's always fraught.
You know, I almost made one ahead of time because I, I, I just had a sneaking suspicion that if I didn't have something, somebody would. But I figured if I made one, then for sure we'd use it. So I rolled the dice. I apologize for not being prepared. It's hopefully optimistic.
I'm with you. I'm, I don't like things, I don't like surprises like this.
Call life.
Are we leaving?
I'm waiting for a link.
You can leave, but you just don't have anywhere to go yet.
You can't go home, but you can't stay here either.
It's a little bit like Hotel California.
Yeah, you can check in, but you can never leave.
And now I've got to forward it to Dan's other email. You can check.
You can do either one.
No, Dan E.
Sorry.
Yep, okay, see you folks over there.
See you over there.